Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, like to thank, like to thank everyone for being in attendance this evening. First item on the agenda is roll call, please. Cassie.
Present. Oh, okay. Ryan.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
John.
Here. Thanks, Cassie. Next item on the agenda, is there anyone with, anyone on the commission with a financial conflict of interest?
I have a conflict with part two of the claims and I will abstain from them.
Okay.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. I'd ask for the approval of the agenda and I think we have an item to add. We have an item to add?
Yep. The sheriff for the food service bid.
Yes, to open up bids for the sheriff, for the jail for the food service for the, for the jail, so.
Want to put that at item seven B?
Yes, that's a good spot to put that. Thank you, Wanda.
And I do note on item thirteen, I think that's supposed to be the January second, twenty twenty-four minutes, not January fifth.
Third.
Whatever day.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the modifications?
A second.
Motion by Don, second by Ryan. Any further discussion about the agenda? Hearing none. Make a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve or nay? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on the matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of remaining speaking time. Are there any items for public comment? Bill?
Bill Conkling, deputy zoning administrator for Yankton County. I just wanted to take a minute and express my appreciation for one of our coworkers and maybe give him a little recognition. Jeff Fiefel had a maintenance. Jeff does a fantastic job every day, but when we have weather like this, he goes above and beyond. I know he gets up very, very early. I know he was working Christmas Day. And I've driven around town to different parking lots. This is probably one of the cleanest and safest ones we have out here and that year, this year is very important to me. So I just wanted to give him a little recognition for what he does and I see mics here too and the road guys. I've done snow removal, it's a miserable job, especially when it's weather like this. So those guys deserve some extra recognition. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, for, for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate that also. Okay, any other, any other public, public comment? Gary, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, thanks. We'll now close public comment. Item on the, the next item on the agenda, deputy auditor. Auditor. Patty.
No, I'm not. Cassie is, will we say her oath, because she is my new deputy?
Okay.
I, Cassie Foss, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota and faithfully discharge the duties of Yankton County Deputy Auditor to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Cassie.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, spring low limits, our highway department, Mike Solacek.
Any questions on it? Pretty much same as last couple of years. Six ten per an axle. On all the oils other than north of Lesterville, off of fifty to the Haymill. Them are, them two roads are seven ten per axle. Legal low limits, Eastside Drive, and legal low limits out to Napa Junction. And then county primary gravels, county maintained township gravels as deemed necessary by the highway superintendent.
You know, Mike, I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention and everybody's, what's below zero, why are you talking about it? But this is the exact time to be talking about it. If you have a heavy load out somewhere, get it moved now. And we certainly hope that the roads will start thawing up sooner, but the time to deal with this is now, not when they're already thawed.
Correct. Do you need a motion on the?
Need a motion on this, because this has to get turned into the state.
Move a second. Okay, so we got a motion by Don, seconded by Dan, to approve the spring load limit rules. Any further discussion by the commission? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the reason.
Also advertise for annual supply bids.
Yep. Also, the reason for the resolution for the spring low limits is if we were not to pass that, it would, we could possibly lose funding.
Sure.
For other projects, so.
Mike, you want to, just for the new people and people at home, just say why it's important to have load limits? Because they might not understand how it's really crucial to keep these roads that weren't really designed for heavy trucks and when the frost has come out of the ground, they get a little unstable and you can have significant damage done if we have heavy loads when they're thawed.
It's no different than your, your gravel driveway or yard when the frost comes out, well, it turns to mush and, well, that's same thing that's happening underneath the asphalt. Whatever moisture is there is thawing and.
And by putting this in place, we're doing our best to preserve the infrastructure that we do have.
Correct.
Perfect. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Dan and Mike.
Advertise for annual supply bids, I just asking, I don't need a motion, just approval or just.
I move that Mr. Solacek have the authority to advertise for annual supply bids.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, all in favor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Anything else to add?
No, I just want to relay the appreciation I'm sure we all have for everything you and your crew has done. I, you know, the roads are perfect, aren't perfect, but they're, they're safe and that has a lot to do with what you guys have done and all the extra hours you're putting in, so thank you.
Well, and that's just it with the, honestly, our ditches, they look like they did at the end of last year, last snow season, so, and we're just beginning. So any little wind we get, it was like yesterday, we went out. You couldn't even tell it by the end of the day, on the, the roads you hit in the morning, they were blown in, so. It's just going to be a fight from now on. We're going to do our best to keep everything open. The only thing would be roads that people do not live on, township roads, that is. We're not opening them until everything else is under control. So.
Good, and, and I just want to, want to add that I seen on Facebook, this was on Saturday already, that, that was posted out, there was like seventy-eight constituents out in the county that are saying, hey, hey, county guys, you're doing a great job, just, just keep up the good work and be safe. And that's all, that's what, that's what we want to, is we want you guys to be safe, do what you can, when you can, and be safe and, and take care of the county roads.
And right now with the, the way the wind is, the way the wind has been, them drifts, they're, they're hard. So you're out there, you're not only beating up the equipment, but the guy that's driving it too is getting the crap beat out of him. So some of them days turn into long days, so.
Again, thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
And, and make sure you tell your crew that thanks from us also, so.
Yep, will do. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, next on the agenda, number seven, sheriff's quarterly report. Preston, you're on.
Good evening. You guys all have a copy of the last three months. Sorry, I have a cold, so bear with me. If you guys have any questions about it, you'll see in the month of December, just towards the end. We renegotiated the marshal contract. It didn't go into effect till December, originally it was supposed to be October, but it didn't, didn't go into effect until December. I think we has about twenty-six marshals and that was about eighty-three thousand dollars of income that came in. But if you go back to, I believe it was in March, you can see that we had brought in about eighty-five thousand. We had fifty-six marshals in the jail at that time, but that was with the old previous contract at seventy dollars a day. So apologies, but you'll see the difference, but right now we only have twenty-six and that's just because of staffing and stuff. But you can, you'll see a, a large notice with the hundred and five dollar increase.
I'd move to approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the sheriff's quarterly, first quarterly report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Preston. Anything else to add?
Food service.
Yep.
What is food service costing per month or per day now?
So when I took, took over, there was a, in the budget, it was for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. In twenty twenty-two, or twenty twenty-three, when I took over, they had increased it by about eight percent. And we were already twenty-five thousand dollars over budget from the year prior, but the budget had remained the same. So I had negotiated a cold breakfast and then we did a hot lunch and hot supper. So to date from the last, I don't have the quite the final tallies from last year, but we were still over budget by about eleven thousand dollars in the month from paid from November of twenty twenty-three. So once we get the final report, we're still going to be over, but that was just the cost of, the food had gone up. So it was a tough decision to go to a cold breakfast, but you're in jail, so ultimately, that's what we decided to do. The reason why we're deciding now to bid the food is that we think that this is a good time. February is going to be the end of the one-year contract that I renewed last year. And so just going ahead and bidding it out, I think would be a good time for the county to, to see what else is out there and if we can save some money or renegotiate something. But I just want to have your guys' approval to go ahead and do a bid.
We need, we need a motion to approve the bidding process, so.
I move we approve the bidding process for food service.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ryan, second by Wanda, to approve the bidding process for the food for the jail. Any further discussion?
Further discussion, I, I'm sure the, the prison and the trustee unit, they probably do something different, don't they? Do they bid it out? Is there any way we could look at, you know, working with them to reduce costs or? I'm sure they have different requirements than hospital.
Yeah, they do, they do bids similar to what we were doing. I know, I know like with, up in Hughes County, they work with the law enforcement training center, so they use the same food service. So Hughes County doesn't even have their own kitchen at the jail, so they have it bust in essentially from law enforcement training center, so. Not saying like, you know, there was discussions one time, I was like, maybe we go to the school district and see what they, what they can do or something. But as a public entity, it's already hard enough to feed the children.
Sure.
But it's, it was a, a topic that we had brought up when jail admin Brandt was around. But with jail admin Luke, that's something we could discuss too. But with the bid out, we're just hoping to get a good, a good bid that we can lower the price down a little bit. Because it's just inflation's really killing everybody, but, so.
Do you have a lot of special menus that you have to work around?
Yeah, we had, do we have, we do have to have a certain threshold of calories for the inmates, especially with the marshals. So we're doing a twenty-five hundred and a three thousand calorie bid out.
But you also do gluten-free and diabetic and?
Yeah, there are some special meals that you have to provide to some, some folks, but for the most part, they all generally eat the same. We don't do milk. A lot of milk spoils and costs a lot of money, so. Just part of the bidding process, we're going to be able to weigh our options and see what we can get for the inmates. But again, it's, you're in jail, so. That's why I did the cold breakfast, those drive that price down. A lot of them sometimes don't even wake up for breakfast, so.
Well, I just think it's a good process to have, have some bids put out there to, to make sure that everybody's honest and, and get the best price we can get, so.
Yeah, just, just see what we got, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the bid is the Dratsman Platt.
No.
No, poll worker wage resolution.
Poll worker wage resolution, I'm sorry. Jumped ahead, you told me I had to move this thing right along, so I'll try it. Okay.
And these are just the, for the upcoming presidential elections with June and, and November. And then we'll have a special prize for the post-election audit board. And I'm not sure how many people I'll have for that. But they'll receive eighteen fifty an hour and we get reimbursed from that from the state.
I'd move to approve the resolution one dash twenty-four, which is the poll worker wage resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to approve the resolution one dash twenty-four for the poll workers for the election. Any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none from the board, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ambulance quarterly report, Eric, you're up.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, all. So third quarter, we ended up, I gave you three different sheets. The first one kind of looks, it says the aggregation of total incident by shift. And that was actually an overall monthly breakdown of our incidents by, by month throughout the entirety of the year. But if you look specifically at just the fourth quarter, we had five hundred and forty-eight calls, which actually, the numbers tapered off for us a little bit in the fall, which kind of caught us off guard a little bit, but gave us a little room to breathe. January is reaping its head furiously. We've had two four truck out days this month already, one week apart, and typically we don't see those that often, so. It's going pretty steadily. When you look at the EMS call volume there with the five forty-eight at the top, that's just the last three quarters. You can actually see the call volume by hour of where we kind of stay busy and then the call volume by specific unit. To tie into that, I also, because we finished the fourth quarter, wanted to give you a tally. We ended up with twenty-three hundred and nine calls in twenty twenty-three, which is the most Yankton County has ever seen. We're at a faster pace than that, but like I said, the numbers tapered off. Sixty-two percent of those twenty-three hundred and nine transports, or twenty-three hundred and nine calls, we actually transported patients in. Only eighteen percent were non-transports, which means it's a lift assist. If someone falls, we go over and lift them up and help them out, or it's, we treat no transport type of deal. And then again, even at the bottom of that, it shows you exactly the breakdown of month, the number of calls that were there. So the next one is the EMS call volume total, and it actually shows you, initially when I pulled this report, I was like, oh, so close. It said twenty-two ninety-nine. There were a few reports that hadn't been locked yet, so I went and changed some of the filters and we did in fact end up at twenty-three oh nine. So that number's not reflective of its true, true volume, so. So we keep, have been keeping extremely busy. So we keep, have been keeping extremely busy. Part of my process of coming onboard back in July is we fired the third-party biller that we have and we've been bringing it back in-house. That's been a very laborious process and when you're working with vendors, it takes a little bit of time. Touching base with my billing department, they're in the process of just getting ready to go live with billing, which means we have no numbers to report as of yet, but I can tell you, we're sitting on about seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars worth of billing that we can start going and collecting as soon as they go live. So we'll be able to start showing numbers by the first quarter report in twenty-twenty-four. We knew it was going to be a bumpy road and kind of slow to get started, but it's just one of those things that kind of happens, so. With that, we were actually able to implement a new statement process, which is going to be electronic, which is going to actually cut the cost of us sending mail ballots out to everybody. So we're going to be able to do it electronic, they'll be notified either by email or text message, and if they opt in, it costs us less than mailing them out. If the participant or the patient decides not to opt in, then eventually they'll get a paper statement that'll go hand in hand with that. With the third-party clearinghouse we utilize, they also have the option for us to do credit card payments, which we've never had before. They've, we've always had to send them over to the treasurer's office so they could collect those processes. I did visit with Patty at the treasurer's office throughout this process to make sure that we were going to work hand in hand. And they were looking at a new program and it's probably not going to be for several months before it's up and running, and she goes, if they have it, run with it. And it actually takes some workload off of them, which gives us a little more onus of being able to manage the area that we need to participate in. So hopefully by the end of the first quarter, I'm going to be able to report back on those numbers. We're just roughly sitting on that amount of money that will, and we continue to build on that as we move throughout the process. I know that Dan and Gary had requested a AP Triton update. Hopefully we're going to hear from them in the next couple of weeks. They're still working through the process. When I did get the email from them, we had literally been emailed the same day, still requesting some further information from Brenda and some billing percentages and stuff. And as my response to that is, I'd rather than take their thorough time to make sure that we're getting a good consensus, consensus of where we're standing at, so they can give us an accurate report rather than trying to rush through it. So I'm hoping to have that information for you by the end of January with the date lined up. That's what I have.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions from the board? The only, the only question I would have is you, you mentioned the seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars that is being billed now. What's the percentage of that number that's going to come into the county's coffers?
You and I had a little bit of a discussion about this. So how to explain this to, to business owners? It doesn't work. EMS is not designed to make money, right? As I explained to John, I said, John, how are, how are we operated? And ambulances actually follow under the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, which is DOT. So we're really viewed as the same as trucking industry. However, we're billed entirely different. So when we go to pick somebody up, we're delivering a good service, all right? The insurance company dictates what we get reimbursed for it. So I told John, it's kind of like you picking up a load here and you're going to Florida, but you're getting reimbursed to Des Moines. Medicare is probably.
I didn't like that answer, by the way.
No, and.
But you understood it.
It truly is the nature of what EMS is, and that's why there's a lot of agencies that it, they struggle is because the reimbursement process is, it struggles. Medicare, which is probably one of our largest payers, they reimburse about fifty, fifty-five percent. So you know, you're doing a lot of deadhead runs that you're not getting reimbursed for.
And it's important that you, you bring that up as our call volume continues to rise and we're only getting paid fifty percent. That's, that's a recipe for what we're seeing throughout the nation and the state is ambulances being able, you know, you can't, we can't afford them, so appreciate you bringing that up, that there's, you can only do so many runs where you're getting reimbursed at fifty percent.
Well, and the unfortunate thing is, as, as your administrator, we're a busy enough agency that you can't use volunteers like a lot of the agencies. We, we need full-time staff to make sure we're answering the calls. And so we don't burn them out, you just need those full-time folks. Now, realistically, looking at previous budgets, I reported in twenty-twenty-two, we billed for one point, just shy of one-point-seven million dollars, we recuperated just under seven-hundred-thousand dollars. Talking to my billing ladies, they think they're going to do better with that. We've added some components of consumables and such that we're going to be able to elaborate and stretch that money as far as we can. However, with that still being said, when you look at it from a budgetary perspective, our budget, you all know where our budget sits, well, most of that actually goes to personnel, the, the big bulk majority of it. Our, our operating expenses have been running three-hundred, four-hundred thousand dollars. While we're, we're recouping that in billable expenses and so we're really breaking even, it just doesn't show or not because of the employees that we have currently there.
Thanks Eric for that detailed explanation. Any other questions from the board?
No, I'd just like to reiterate my appreciation to, you know, your department as well because they're, they're going in the cold and the snow like everybody else and really appreciate that and everything you're doing. Emergencies don't, don't stop.
By the way, one last item. I just wanted to say, appreciate what you guys did for us at the end of last year. I actually had a full-time employee apply with us and we offered him a position as of today. We'll be starting the beginning of February and so it did get us some traction.
Good. Appreciate everything you do, Eric.
Yep, thank you very much.
Now I need a motion to approve this report.
I'll move approval.
Second. Okay, Dan approved, made the motion, Don second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to the Drotzmann plat, Gary.
We have a preliminary plat tonight, preliminary plat of lots one through twenty, Deer Boulevard Estates and Southeast Quarter of Section Nine, Township Ninety-three North, Range Fifty-Six West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. This is one of the benefits of our change of zone from RT to R2, so it's exciting to see that we're getting a proposed twenty lots out of a parcel.
Move approval.
Second.
I got a motion by Dan, second by Don, to approve the plats. Any further discussion from the commission?
So the, I was just looking at this, you know, in these plats, we have a, the owners know how the roads are going to be built and maintained. Are those things in place? Because those, those things have been.
They're already starting those discussions, yes, and, and the developer even mentioned that he may be doing all twenty lots at one time, but we'll, we'll have to see.
All right. Thanks.
So the, the roads going into the developments are the developers.
Right.
Responsibility.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Any further questions? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks Gary. Moving on to the wage discussion on the agenda. These are just some, some things that I put out, looked at, looking at the wages, the wages of the, the wage matrix for the county employees. And I have six. I, I have a copy also.
You don't need a copy.
I do not. So in front of you have the, you have the matrix that's, was updated in twenty-twenty-two. Last meeting, we decided that we would discuss the matrix and, and the wages for the county employees this evening. How far do we want to carry this discussion on tonight? As Eric mentioned earlier in his presentation, we did approve a dollar and a half an hour raise for the ambulance, full-time ambulance people at previous meetings. I feel that the matrix needs to be looked at, but at the same token, we have some issues with our sheriff and jailers that their wages are just about as far behind as, as what our ambulance service was, not quite as bad, but almost. So I think, I think we need to do something this evening for our sheriffs and jailers to make sure that we're not half-staffed in our sheriff's department and our jail at this point in time. Open it up for discussion at this point in time. In, in front of you, I've got just a presentation, if we were to move the sheriffs and the jail staff up one grade, but back two steps.
If it's okay, let, let the sheriff come up and kind of explain that situation. I'm sorry.
Nope.
That's okay, appreciate it. Like I said, I apologize for my cold, so just bear with me. So as you know, with law enforcement across the country, it's always kind of hard to hire and retain people at the sheriff's office. So since we did the hire click, I think we've had about twenty-one applicants. But at the sheriff's office, at a level of, you know, honor and integrity, sometimes those don't quite, those applicants don't fit what we're looking for. And so we've got currently three deputy sheriff positions still open, and then we have about four correctional officer positions open. In corrections.
How many, how many openings did you say you had? I'm sorry.
Four in the corrections.
And that, that's for the jail side?
Yeah, in the jail side, yeah, and then three for deputy.
So a total of seven?
Yeah. And inside the jail, you know, obviously it's a, it's a difficult job, and the reason why I brought it up earlier in the quarterly report is that we just renegotiated the marshal contract from seventy dollars to a hundred and five per day. And, and I brought up that March versus December conversation piece, because if we had renegotiated back in March when we were fully staffed, a hundred and five dollars a day for fifty-six employees would have been about like a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars just by renegotiating the contract. So that's why I brought that up. Now we can't house fifty-six marshals because we don't have the staff, plus we have our own violators in our own community, you know, so summer months, it just picked up too, so. The reason why I brought this up is, and I'm glad that Eric had brought it up to you is that, you know, they definitely needed a raise in their agency, but statutorily that we're required by law to be here and run the jail, so I think that it's something that the, the sheriff's office and the correction side needs to have some kind of updated in pay. So that's where we're sitting, and like I said, we just don't want to hire anybody, but, because we did get twenty-one apps, it's just it doesn't, they don't quite fit the mold. They may not pass the background. They may not pass the interview, you know? There's some, some interesting ones that we get in interviews sometimes, but, but that's why I think it's worthy to, to bring up. This is the conversation.
For those of us who made it to the eight county meeting and we spoke with, Turner County had quite an issue where they lost a lot of people up there, and so it's.
Didn't some of them come here?
Well, some of them did, but the, you know, they, I guess the point I'd want to make is that with law enforcement, especially certified people, I want to say the highway patrol is paying thirty dollars an hour starting, and if you, just like with the ambulance staff, these guys have options and they're going to go where they can make the most money. You can't blame them.
Preston, how long have these been open and advertised?
We leave the correction one open all year. The deputy sheriff, we have a couple jailers that want to move up to a deputy sheriff position, but we can't even move them up because we're so short in the jail. And we want to kind of do a homegrown, if we can, kind of reward the folks that we already have hired, but we can't even bring them up because we're so, because we're short. There's been times where our captains are the only ones working for the day, and if they're sick, I've covered a patrol shift for twelve hours and I was the only person available for call. So we just, we'd like to get more people hired on and, and get a, a good routine so we can have people taking calls for service. Sheriff's office obviously does civils, we do warrants. You know, there's just a lot of things that statutorily we're required to do, but the only way we can get there is if we do something for the employees. And like for corrections right now, I know that we lost two people for sure to the Department of Corrections, because they start out at twenty-five bucks an hour. And I think after the first of the year, the CEO position, it's now twenty-two forty-one an hour, but we still can't compete with the Department of Corrections. So we lost two people that were, you know, at the sheriff's office for, for quite some time. I know one applied out to Minnehaw County, to the sheriff's office there, so I just think that we got to, if you guys would be able to, to help us out, that'd be great.
If I'm reading this handout correctly, it appears that a request is being made to increase the hourly salary by a dollar ten, is that right?
That's, that's what it would work out to, yes. If we move, if we move the full-time position sheriff and jailers up one grade according to our matrix, current matrix, we move them up one grade, back two steps, it would amount to a dollar-ten an hour raise for basically the full-time employees at the sheriff and jail.
And you have fifty-six employees?
Uh, right now, we got about thirty-eight full-time.
Okay, so that's what? An additional thirty-eight thousand a year? Or more than that?
I guess I was just thinking, you, you just mentioned where we need to go in kind of with a scalpel and it's the deputies and the jailers, right? Those are the, those are the ones.
So we were talking frontline workers, you know? But I've had people that are salaried, like myself, or, or jail sergeants, they have to come in and work overnight shifts just to cover the overnights.
So I want to know how much it is in a year, this increase? And the second question is, will your increase in federal marshal fees cover it?
Oh yeah, def, I mean, we can't, but right now, we're not housing as many marshals because we don't have the staff to do it.
I get that.
So if we get more staff, then we would be able to.
I, I get that as well. My only concern is that we just saved fifty thousand dollars on our insurance because we don't have enough money, and now we're giving raises in addition to the raises that we gave a year ago. But if your marshal service fees cover it.
And, and you know, to, to Wanda's point that you're making is, is we can, we can either hire people and keep our jail open or run it at half-capacity and probably lose more money still.
Well, I think we're going to keep our jail open. I don't think that's even a question.
Well, I mean, yes, but are we going to be able to run it at capacity without people? That's, that's.
Well, but then again, you got to find people that want to work. And as the sheriff indicated, there are people who may have applied that might not be suitable.
Yeah, it might cause you more of a headache down the road.
Yeah, no, exactly. And, and if you want good quality people, you know, unfortunately you got to pay more. The reality.
And, and as Eric mentioned earlier this evening, that because of that dollar and a half increase, and I'm, I'm, I don't even believe that that dollar and a half is where it needs to be, but for now, it's, it's going to suffice. He did pick up a extra employee this, this week, today actually. So if we. So if we, if, if we can produce three more, we're, we're seven employees down at the jail and the sheriff's department now. If we are to pick up two employees at the jail and pick up five to six marshals, I think that would more than make up the difference in what we're paying those people. And I, I just think it's more important to, to maintain, a- actually maintain what we have now and hopefully gain employees than let our employees leave us after we've trained them to do what we need them to do.
How long does, you, you hire a new deputy, how long do we have to send him to peer to get?
Six weeks.
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen weeks.
So we have to pay that, a new guy gets hired on, we have to send him and pay him for thirteen weeks before he can even? Yeah, so that's where we're investing quite a bit.
And I'll tell you where, where we got a win was in Turner County for the deputy positions. Their wages were much lower than ours. So when they came, we were able to give them a pay increase, you know, just by them. But now Turner County has turned around. Now they're offering more to their sheriff and their, their deputies and whatnot. Now they don't have a jail out there, but.
Well, on this third page, you show that we're pretty well below on Brookings, Cottington, and Clay County. Hughes seems to have a deal on.
What's that?
Hughes seems to have a low, low deal on, on paying their people there. They must have.
Well, that's hourly rate.
That's, that's an hourly wage too, versus a salary.
Yeah. I see, Don's making a good point though. Yeah.
So my angle on it is not so much the money as it is the services that we're gonna not be giving our citizens in the county if we don't have an adequately staffed police department. With the amount of illegal immigrants and the drug pushing that's been coming in for the last three years, they're all gonna, all, everybody in the United States is gonna end up facing that problem. And I think, I think I would feel guilty if I didn't didn't support doing what you need to get your staff up to where it needs to be.
Thank you.
So, so what were you proposing then? What, what's your solution?
Well, I think even with moving everybody up one grade and two steps back, compared to some of the, the wages that you've already seen, we're still behind. But it's not saying that, I think it'd just be good for the, the morale at the sheriff's office that, you know, the, the county commission supports getting us up there. Now, if, now somebody might be on a, and this is where maybe the, the matrix has some faults because you could be at a certain grade in a step five, but then you move up a grade and you're making less than you would in the previous grade. So that's where I think some of those, the tweaking on the.
And, and I agree, and I think, I think we need to take a look at the matrix in, in whole because if, actually if you look at the, the, the matrix and you look at a step five or grade five on the left side of the column, and you go across that all the way across, and I, I know every, every employee is valued. I'm not saying that anybody is diminished. But at grade five on our matrix, when, when you're hiring, starting people out, you're starting a senior paramedic at the same price as a field man in the equalization department, as a 4H administrator and a, a, a department clerk in the, in the government center, as a clerical eight, as a clerical in the nurses department, as a mechanic in the consodian, and they're, they're more than worth their weight in gold if they make sure that the heater's running and the, the toilets are flushing. But, but a paramedic that's gone through, a senior paramedic that's gone through training, like, you know, to, to, to arrive in an ambulance and save someone's life, that, that's where you're starting them out at this level. And that's why I say that we need to, we need to do something now for our, our sheriff's department and our jailers. But this matrix needs to be adjusted and revised again. And I'm not saying we need to do that tonight, but.
I, I'd agree with you, Mr. Chairman, on that. So, in the meantime, to, you know, stave off the losses, your recommendation was to, to move the deputies and jailers up a, up a grade?
I think.
Tell, tell, I guess, exactly what you want.
And we talked about the frontline workers. Well, if we just did the frontline workers across the board, if you did that, now they're making within a thousand, two thousand of their supervisors that are salaried. So.
And, okay.
And so what I was thinking is that since grade fifteen is unoccupied, you move everybody up one grade. Now if you're on a step zero or up to a step three, and you move directly right up to the next grade on a zero, there's gonna be a, a more significant increase. But if we didn't give them a step raise for that year, then it would even itself out versus, you know.
So you're saying move them up a grade, not back as two steps?
Uh, move everybody up one grade and still do the two steps. But if you're a grade, uh, so like, I have two sergeants right now, and I believe that they're at a grade ten. If you move them up, but they're, they're a grade ten, step zero. And they're gonna get their anniversary raise in a couple months, I believe. But if you move them up one grade, there's a little bit more significant of an increase because you go from a zero to a zero on the grade. Do you see the difference there? But if they were like a grade ten, step six, and then you moved them up one grade and back two, there's that, that little increase that you were talking about, but. So, if you were to move somebody up from a grade zero, or a, whatever grade they're at, and they're at zero, and you move them up another grade, they don't receive a step increase for that year. Because everybody will get their step increase on their anniversary date. But since there's such a significant jump from zero to zero, that it would eliminate that step for that person. That makes sense?
Yes. And, and there's gonna be some tweaking that we're gonna have to look at.
I think this is, this is putting the Band-Aid on to get us through where we're gonna have to take a deep dive at this at some point.
I, I think, I think we should take the, a stronger look at this and like, we should. I mean, we have sort of a complex, a rule of up a grade, down two steps. Maybe you have a step or not this year. I'd, I'd really rather like to take the time to really analyze the full effect of this in terms of, you know, we have a matrix, we can, we can plug in the numbers and see what the, the net result cost to, to the county is and, you know, weigh that to the benefit of getting, getting better wages to our employees.
I thought the whole purpose of the matrix was so every employee knew what they were going to get the next year. So that it's not, I'm gonna give this department a raise and not that department 'cause this one's more important than that one. So then you get down to hurt feelings because everybody thinks they're more important than everybody else.
I agree with what you're saying, and that's the purpose of the matrix. However, we've had, in the last two years, we've had the, the state has increased the, the highway patrol salary and wages by five dollars an hour over the last two years?
Even with, even with this, a grade move up, it's still not even touching the highway patrol.
Well, in fairness though, the state of South Dakota seems to have unlimited funds.
They only have a ninety-seven million dollar budget.
I understand that, and, and I understand we are limited on our budget. But if we wanna, if we want to maintain a sheriff's department in Yankton County and provide a service to our constituents, that everyone of us sitting up here, uh, we're, we're voted in by those people. And if we wanna maintain a sheriff's department and an ambulance service and a jail, we need to make sure that our people, that our, our employees are, are not going out and looking at Minnehawha's salary and their matrix or saying, okay, we've already trained these people, and now I can go to this, to become a state trooper. I can still live in Yankton, and I can make four dollars an hour more than I'm, what I'm making working for Yankton County. That is, that is where we're at right now. Unfortunately, that's what's happened. And we need to step up, put our big pants on, and make sure that we have the people here to provide the service that our constituents ex- are, expect.
And it's.
And in fairness, those, if you went to be a state trooper, you wouldn't be living in Yankton because they move you all over the state.
There's a Y, there's a YPD guy that just left in, his station here. I mean, he left the Yankton Police Department, which.
I get that, but they also move them all over the state. So there's no guarantee that he's going to be just in Yankton.
I understand that, but what I'm, alls I'm saying is, 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 is they can go do that and.
And, and the other thing too is that, especially in corrections, we have on, in the county policy that if you work a holiday, you're supposed to take a holiday off somewhere else. It's gotten to the point where, you know, with people sick, vacation, whatever, training days, we're paying somebody to come in to work overtime for somebody's holiday that they took somewhere else. So, the employees don't even get time and a half for the policy, which I think at some point would maybe need to be looked at too, but. But right now, it's to the point where you have somebody that works a holiday, that take a day somewhere else in their pay period. But we have to pay somebody else to come and work overtime for the day that they took off for a holiday. It's like counterproductive, really.
I, I agree, Ryan, that we need to take a look at this thing to make sure that we're, we're even and, and, and above the, the scale. But I don't think we have the time to sit down and look at the, the complete matrix to make sure that, that we maintain the, our sheriff's ability to manage.
I don't think it would be, and based on the couple proposals to do, to sit down and do the, the analysis of what the cost is and then, and obviously we know what the benefits are in terms of getting better salaries to our, particularly the frontline workers. So, you know, I feel like having that in front of me, I can really make a good decision here.
Okay, Dan?
I guess where I'm at is, is kinda, you know, I wish we could pay all our employees more. I mean, we really value everybody. You know, we had the ambulance come to us, and now our sheriff, that we, we can't find people to fill these jobs. We've been trying, and we can't lose anymore, or we're gonna, you know, put ourselves into a bind. If we lose two more jail staff, holy moly, we're gonna be in big trouble. If we lose another deputy, you know, to Don's point, we aren't gonna have people out there, you know, patrolling. And it's just, a new guy, we will have to train him thirteen weeks before he can even do it. So, I think what we do is, I agree with, everybody has to, we need to look at this down the road, but we need to kinda stop the bleeding right now, okay? So we can move forward, and if that's moving the jailer and deputy is an up a grade and back two steps, if that's what we need to do to stop the bleeding right now, we do that, so we don't lose more people. And so I guess I'd make that motion to do that. And then, yes, we need to look at this. I'd say we get some department heads in and, and see if this salary matrix makes sense, because a lot has happened with COVID in the whole world. And so that, that'd be my motion to make those two for now, and then we can reevaluate when we get more time.
Dan, can you clarify which two you were?
Uh, for the deputies and the jailer. That's, that was what he requested.
Can I make a, just, but in the frontline worker part of it, the, it's like the captains. There's some days where, because we have to give people days off for their holidays or whatever, I only have a captain that's working patrol for the day, you know, 'cause we run the twelve-hour shift. So, if we just did.
Is, is that the sergeant deputy or?
No, that, sergeants are on the overnights.
Okay, so would it be the lieutenant deputy?
Yeah, it, it was changed right when I got in. So the lieutenant, I don't have a chief deputy, so that was.
Okay. So the, the, the front lines, the, the, I guess when I say deputy, I would include the deputy, the sergeant, and the captains? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And then the jail, and then the basic jailers?
Yeah, and the corporals. So the, the corp, or the sergeants in the jail, they're salaried. So if you move everybody up, like the corporals up a grade, there's gonna be corporals within like nine hundred bucks of their supervisor that's salaried, you know. So that's why, across the board, I was, if you made the, the grade moves up, that's where.
Okay, which ones are considered frontline?
Cassie, you didn't get that motion? Just kidding.
What's that?
What, um, what are considered the frontlines? The deputy, uh, the deputies, the sergeants, the captains?
Everybody except for probably Terry and Laney, 'cause they're.
So you're basically gonna have everybody?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I, I guess I would probably leave.
Can't you just for the motion, since it's ever, just say jailers and frontline workers? Would that consider putting everybody in there?
Do we wanna?
I thought, I thought we didn't have any chief deputies anymore.
Uh, we, well, I don't, I don't have one right now, but, but if.
Because you wanted those two people to be the same.
Correct, yeah. But I, what I was saying is that if you moved everybody up one grade, that separates everybody still. So it's not like you're making nine hundred dollars less than your supervisor who's required to be on call to come in at any time and.
So you're talking about lieutenant deputy, sergeant deputy, deputy, and then sergeant, jailer, corporal jailer, and jailer?
Correct, yeah. Everybody up one grade, yeah.
Everybody but Terry and Laney.
Yeah, even the chief deputy position would be moved up one grade, even though I don't have a chief deputy, but it's on the. I didn't wanna mess up the matrix.
And, and that's, that's where we need to review the, the entire matrix also.
You're, you're talking about, about thirty-five people or so right now?
Yeah, it'd be, yeah.
Did you?
That's without the people that you would hire.
Yep.
So it might be forty. So we're talking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in a year.
And how much was I, uh, and all like last year, we were short on personnel. I can't remember what, I haven't gotten the final report on, on salary.
I can get that tomorrow.
Sheriff, we're keeping you at fourteen then?
What?
What's that?
We'd keep you, we wouldn't touch yours?
Well, yeah, so my thing is, is that I'm on call, I'm on call every fourth, fourth week. So I got called out last weekend, and I came out and worked patrol for three hours because we had to take a juvenile that wasn't from Yankton, that came to Yankton, but we had to send that person to Sioux Falls to JDC. So, you know, those are times where I come out and I do patrol as well. But that's why I just, I was gonna say, keep it consistent, and then you do a re- revisit, but.
But, it's, it's, when you look at the, the total amount of the requests, it's, it's really not that very much money considering the income that you possibly can make through the feds. And I just, I think having, having more officers around and out on duty and not dead tired, we're gonna have better service to the community. You know, the last, last month, we paid forty, forty-three thousand dollars for a.
Juvenile detention?
Juvenile detention. We didn't even.
Which his guys are transporting.
Which I'm working on. That's a, that's a, that's a goal.
So Eric's got a comment to make, and then let's move on.
So, not to jump into this realm, but it ties back to what you guys did for us graciously back in December. And I remember your comment about when I asked for the dollar fifty raise, it didn't fall into the matrix. You guys gave me the honeymoon period and graciously gave it to us. At least he's coming to you. It's something that's within the matrix until it can be readdressed, and I think it would be a fair proposal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second on the floor.
What's the motion?
More commotion?
Can we clarify the motion?
Yeah, I guess my motion. Yeah, I guess my motion was to increase the frontline workers by, um, what is it? One step and then back.
One grade.
Okay, one grade and back two steps. And that would be for, uh, the sheriffs and jailers.
Is that good enough to, I mean, cause that's gonna, I think it's more, not as confusing as just to say frontline workers and jailers.
Yeah, well, who knows what a frontline worker is?
I don't like that term frontline work. That can be vague. I like the idea of saying the deputies and jailers.
Deputy sheriffs and the jailers.
Correctional officers.
That work for you?
Deputy officers is fine?
Yeah, everybody's a deputy. But that's how we were, even like, uh, the chief deputy position, even though it's one grade above the captains, I would just, everybody would just be moved up one grade. So then that would just not mess up the matrix. It would still just be within what the matrix is requiring. So that way we're not all over the place.
So this is a permanent change in the matrix?
Well, I think it would, it need to be because, you know.
No, but we can, we can still, yes, but we can still adjust these positions in the matrix.
This is a permanent, this is a small permanent change in the matrix is what we're proposing here.
And I, I guess the, the justification for that is, you know, like Donna said and we've said too, is we've seen a, a need. We're losing people, probably gonna lose more people if we don't do something and I think this will get us by until we can tweak the ma- matrix.
Are you good with the motion?
Yep.
Public comment.
Just speaking as a female, my name's Emily Vanderhuel and, um, just speaking as a female who's worked in administrative positions. I feel by leaving these two, I'm assuming ladies out, the, the other two people. Is that right? The, that aren't essential, like, I feel like add those two ladies in, you know? Um, I feel like it's really unfair. So I just wanted to say that. It was gonna bug me.
Well, Emily, I guess to that, I don't, I don't think of them as, because they're ladies is what we're, we're trying to target where we're seeing the losses.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're, if we don't have jailers, we can't run the jail. If we don't have deputies, we can't patrol. And those other people are very important, cause you know, when I go to the, see the sheriff, he's not there. They give him the message, so, uh. And yeah, they, we, we all are saying we need to look at this and adjust it. But for right now, to prevent losing more officers in the jail and more deputies, I think we just need to target these two positions, which we have four jailers we need and three deputies and the possibility of losing more. We target this for now and then we reevaluate everything. Uh, because, you know, if we start doing admin here, then we're gonna need to do admin in the highway department and probably his admin and then, then their admin. And I think the time to do admin is maybe when we reevaluate the whole.
Later.
So that's my reasoning, that's my reasoning for, for that.
I have two questions. Sheriff, does that mean you're going up a grade and two steps or are you staying where you're at?
Well, I, I take calls and I, I come out and work patrol, but.
So is that a yes?
Yeah, I would say it would be, everything would remain just like.
My second question is, with all these deputies that we have, how many sheriff cars routinely set in the parking lot at the safety center?
How many routinely sit?
I'm sorry?
How many routinely sit?
How many routinely sit? Because you drive by there and there's usually four or five sheriff cars there, sitting.
Well.
Which means to me, they're not out driving around in the county.
Staff them. Uh, but originally when I took over, there was only four marked cars. So we had about 14 vehicles at the sheriff's office. Now, three were transporters and the remaining was unmarked and then the four marked cars. So then the one deputy had an accident, so then we were down to three marked cars. And that's when I had, uh, bought some new graphics and then we had graphic. And my, my opinion was we need to be seen by the public. So now when there's, uh, people working, you know, they may come back to the office because there's paperwork to do, like civil process, um, the executions, the, um, you know, the warrants or whatever. So yeah, we do have some cars that are there, but, um, they are take home cars, um, for the people that are on call. So I do have two new vehicles that I got last year that I didn't have enough even in the budget to even, because of the markup on everything, to fully furnish the vehicles. So they have two markings on two of the cars that are scheduled once the, um, the person that outfits the vehicles is able to get the stuff to put in. It just comes back to the supply and demand.
Any further discussion from the commission? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Sorry, Paul.
Oh, it's all right, you go ahead. I guess my thing, uh, the question I had was that our office, we're on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week also. I mean, I'm glad I don't work like that, you know, they're, they're twice as long as the sheriff. But at any given time of night, I gotta get up or Erin's gotta get up. We gotta go to the house fire or there was something, a flush, all this kind of stuff. I'm salaried, she's hourly. But I mean, I, I thought we were gonna do something with the matrix as a group and now we're doing onesies and twosies. I mean, if I didn't know on this, I'd have came here, I'd like to give her a buck and a half an hour raise because she's looking for a second job. Cause she can't make it where she's at now. I mean, I'm not complaining, but I'm about eight grades behind our steps. Uh, but it's, I was hoping, I, I was hoping that to get in, I didn't realize we were doing this tonight, that's why I was here. But I mean, I came here and asked the same thing for her, but we'll have to try to do that later.
And again, that's why I thought we had a matrix. So it's not this department's more important than this department, because that's not true.
It, it is not true that one depart- department is more important than the other. It's, it's just that, that we're in a position right now that, yes, if we have to take individual steps to make to get to where we need to do, and I understand exactly what you're saying, Paul, and that's why this needs to be looked at and it needs to be adjusted and changed. Whoever designed this matrix four years ago, I, I don't even understand it. And I've gone through it and I've looked at it and there's other issues that we'll talk, we'll discuss at the next meeting, but we don't need to go into that tonight. But, and I agree with you, Paul. It, it, it all needs to be looked at and adjusted. But for right now, I think, and, and if Erin's looking for another position, I'll sit down and visit with her as much as I can and explain to her that, and, 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 and explain to her that we'll look at it and we'll make adjustments.
Cause the one thing like with our salaries, we get half the payback.
Exactly. I, I, and I understand that completely.
A buck and a half and you seventy-five cents rate.
Yep, yep. Maybe, maybe we'll discuss that in three weeks. Okay?
Thank you very much, guys. I know, working 24, uh, sheriff's office being 24/7, 365, it's very important that, that I got done and appreciate it and I know the employees will too. Thank you.
Could you give a, a list to, uh, Kim of who will get it and the step and two steps back, right?
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, South, State of South Dakota lease agreement, nurse's office.
Well, I'd move to approve the State of South Dakota lease agreement.
I have a motion, second?
Second.
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, uh, commission discussion?
Yeah, I, I really, Rob, have you had a chance to review this lease?
I have.
I gu- I guess I have a, a lot of concerns, uh, with this. You know, you go through and they have a 15-day grace period where they don't necessarily have to pay rent, but if there's a fault in the building, we have to respond within 24 hours. It just, it doesn't seem like it's a fair situation. I mean, I, I, I can tell the lawyers in peer spent a lot of time, I don't even know how many pages this is, but I, I, it just seems like we're at a disadvantage yet again, you know, with the state on, on this. And maybe I'd like to see a six-month lease or, or something and, and a 30-day notice where either party can say this isn't working to us because the way I read it is they, they can tell us 60 days that we, they don't wanna continue, but I don't see us even having that option here, do we?
Uh, Rob, what are your thoughts there?
And we don't have that option.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
So.
Sorry, and we don't, we don't have a termination option. They do have that 60-day notice as Dan alluded to. And Dan, I know you're reading it. It's, it's a standard lease they use in other forms too, so it's pretty similar to what they already use.
I, I guess I.
We, we do have an option though at the end of one year or with 30 days notice that we don't have to, and, and I know we gotta wait the full year.
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't like, you know, we, we do have some, I think there's some leaks down there still and it mentions the ceiling. I just, I don't know, I feel it's kind of puts us at a disadvantage. I'd like to see where either party can terminate the lease with 30 days notice or 60 days and I would like a six-month lease, but if we do a year, that's fine too. I, I guess I, I just feel this is kind of at a disadvantage to us as Yankton County. It's our building and they're telling us what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do. That's what irritates me about it, so.
And I would think too, that if we want to terminate in the same timeframe, I assume they would agree to that. You know, they got a 60-day window. I'm sure we're okay with the 60-day window too. Maybe give both 30, 30, I guess. I'm sure you could approve it with that change and provide it to them and I'm sure that'd be acceptable, I would think.
You guys okay with that?
John, does that make sense? I mean, with that, I wouldn't think that a 30-day termination for both parties would be out of line and if agree to it with that change and get it to them and.
You, you can make that adjustment on that contract, I'm assuming.
I'm assuming they can send it to us in kind of some draft form.
Or you could do it in, by interlineation, sign it and send it to them and see what they do.
That's what I'm saying. Can we strike that or add that into the, into it, the contract? Sign it, send it back to them and say, here, here's what, here's what we agree to.
A, a couple of other things I want to mention talks about like ADA accessible and I know that elevator from talking to Jeff is, is, it's old. I don't even believe they make parts anymore for it and he was, uh, trying to order, uh, some of the parts off of eBay. If that thing, if we can't fix that in two days, are we then out of compliance with the ADA? I, you know, that's what it says here. Is the state gonna, you know, force us to follow that? I, I don't know. I mean, reasonable accommodations, we will. But I know we've had that elevator shut down for a few days before at a time, so, uh, that, things like that, I guess can, concern me. You know, they had, they had the ability to work with us and notify us when all these changes were happening and you know, they didn't do it and that's why we've come to this conclusion, so. May, do we take another month and make a few tweaks and bring it back or, or bring it back?
In the meantime, we're not getting paid our fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Well, I, I think we need to be getting that paid, but I don't, I, I guess I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with this lease. That's just my opinion and I know how I'm gonna vote if, if you guys are okay with it.
Well, we don't. We don't have any options that, that we know of at this point in time to rent that out or use that space anyway. Uh, that I know of. I don't know if anybody else does, but, uh, so if they cancel out, we're, we're not behind where we would be. If we could quit at any time, uh, I'd say, uh, put in the, the clause you, you talked about, Rob, and, and and to see if they agree and.
You know, and I, I also don't really like this, you know, 24-hour to repair everything that, that seems, that seems excessive. You know, we are gonna have the air conditioner system tore apart, you know? Hopefully that'll be up and running in 24 hours, but.
Put some standard language in there.
Yeah, I just, I just want to be treated fairly and it doesn't seem like this.
Normal repairs.
Yeah, yeah, normal, reasonable, yep. I'm with you.
We're gonna sue.
I guess I just.
We're gonna sue the state anyway.
No, and I don't think, and I don't think they will either. And I, and, and I appreciate your, your concerns, Dan. I just negotiated fifteen hundred dollars in good faith with the state thinking that at least we got the, the WIC program is still available here in, in the same location. Um, the county, the, the nurse is available here.
I think you did a great job negotiating, just like the, this is the state, you know, making everything our problem again and so. What does everybody want? Do we want to have a, a clause where we can, you know, walk away from this after 60 days or just want to go with this?
I, I guess we have a motion on the floor and a second. Would you, do you want to amend the motion, anybody?
I do not.
Any other con, other, other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
I'd like a roll call.
Roll call vote, okay. Roll call vote.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Don?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Approved January 3rd, 2024, meeting minutes?
It is second.
Second.
Second, okay.
The first was on Monday.
Okay, approved January 2nd, meeting minutes?
This is the one.
The meeting minutes for, that are in the packet do not mention the fact that, you know, on December 5th, 2023, a motion was made and a vote was taken to move the state's attorney from part-time to, from part-time to full-time and it wasn't in the December 5th mo- minutes and it didn't make it into the January 2nd minutes. It's gotta be in there somewhere. I don't care if they put it in today.
That is on item 16.
I understand that's item 16, but item 16 was something that was passed or discussed, moved, passed on December 5th, not today's date.
Can you just, uh, make a motion on the, uh, for the Jan- January 6th minutes that?
January 2.
January 2, sorry.
Rob, is that okay if we do that and then the, those minutes that way to reflect that or?
Yeah, to reflect that it occurred in 2023.
In the December 5th.
Cause that's the time it occurred, yes.
And it's on video that we, we did that, just, I, did you make a motion already, Wanda?
Other than that, I'd move to approve the January 2nd, 2024 minutes with the understanding that we did discuss the state's attorney's position and it's not in those minutes.
Well, and then we'd say that it was, it was approved, what was the date it was approved? In December?
December 5.
December.
December 5, you're fine with it? Okay, I would second Wanda's motion then.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve January 2nd, 2024, meeting minutes with the adjustment. Um, I have a second. Any further discussion by the commission? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, same sign. Uh, Treasurers' Report, Auditorial Treasurers' Report, Pool Cash Report, Claims.
I would move to approve part one of the claims.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve part one of the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Approved, or, uh, against, same sign. Motion to approve.
I move to approve the second part of the claims.
Second.
I have a motion to approve part number two of claims by Ryan, second by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With one abstention.
I move to approve the Auditor and Treasurers' Report.
Second.
I have a motion.
And pooled cash.
And pooled cash?
And pooled cash? I thought we had to do that separate, but okay. And pooled cash.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Auditor's Treasury Report and pooled cash. Uh, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Uh, now, at this point in time, approved state's attorney to full-time starting position as of our reading.
Judge, we don't need that, that's what Wanda would have made reference to.
Yeah, we've already done that, so we don't have to do that again.
Strike that. Commissioners' Updates, let's start with Wanda.
Well, I'm still trying to get parents to be better parents and children to be better children.
Understand.
Um, and I'm not sure how that works. As parent me, I am doing an abysmal job.
Abysmal?
I think you're doing a good job.
I think you're working hard at doing a good job. Ryan, anything to update us with?
Well, uh, other than been managing to keep ahead of the snow, uh, one of the big concerns is we still do have people living in RV parks. And we had a negative forty-five below wind chills in three-season campers. That's a, it's a scary prospect that we have people living in these conditions in our county. Some of these people didn't get roads cleared out till days later. Um, if there was an emergency problem, who knows what would have happened? So, it's a, it's a concern, um, that I saw while I was out clearing snows that past, uh, four days, so.
And that's down at the, the camper parks down there?
You know, we have them, it's not just that one, you know, we've had a campground that, uh, had even a, an LLC registered to a campsite. Um, we had, um, over the holidays, I visited with, uh, some folks who, it was a scary thing that it was almost a, uh, human trafficking situation that was happening in one of our campgrounds. Um, so it's, uh, I, I, again, um, we've kind of let these things kind of run wild. And I think we're playing with fire, so.
Okay.
Would you suggest that we have, uh, uh, as, an individual appointed to monitor that?
We do, we need to, we need to have, when there's violations out there, we need to have zoning violations enforced. We need to, there, I think our ordinances need to be updated a little bit to address these things.
Right now, that would be planning and zoning's.
Yep.
Accountability.
Yeah.
Isn't there also an issue with those recreational campgrounds being places that are only seasonal and not full-time? And they're taxed as seasonal and not full-time residents?
Yeah, that is another thing is, you know, you have a, a seasonal, there, a seasonal campground and you have people living there full-time as residential. You know, that means we are responsible for all the emergency management policing.
As I recall, I think we we had, uh, we allowed them one person to stay and monitor full-time.
Well, the others, yeah, they're, you know, like the state of South Dakota says that there's allowance for longer stays for a campground, a clearly marked campground, tenant or attendant, but, uh, only one, you know, so, um, I think there's.
Many more.
Many more, and obviously there's no, there's no, uh, campgrounds active in the, at this time, or should be active.
So we, so our planning and zoning board has a lot on their, on their, on their plate right now, um, with the, the wind, um, next coming up, the pipeline. But I agree, I think we need to have them look at, at doing something with our zoning ordinances.
Yeah, to make sure that they're actually in there and it's really clearly defined, um, but then also, um, yeah, we, and then we just have to make sure that we're enforcing things, where they need to be enforced.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's a challenge, is making sure that we have enforcement for these things.
And and if we make that decision to do that, we, we need, we need to do it. We don't need to go out there one diamond.
Yeah, yeah, and it'd be better if we had the ordinances in place properly for trying to really, it's really hard to enforce things when, you know, uh, you don't have the ordinances really well clarified.
And that would just be for, you know, the ones that get built in the future too, because the ones that are already built are, you know, under the old zoning ordinance. I mean, that's, that's correct, Rob, right? If you change the zoning ordinance, it's only for the ones going forward, right?
I guess.
So I mean, that, that makes it difficult, and I, I agree with it.
Well, I, we know mistakes have been made, so we should probably make sure that we don't continue those mistakes.
Don, anything to, uh, update? Dan?
Yeah, quite a few bills are going through our state legislature. Uh, make sure you guys reach out, uh, to our District eighteen reps. There's a JDAI reimbursement bill that's gonna, uh, for successful diversion. It would raise it from two hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollars, uh, so that's positive, that's, that's a day and a half in Sioux Falls. So it goes from half a day for successful diversion to a day and a half, uh, so we appreciate that. Uh, there's also some reform for the twenty-four seven, I guess, uh, some, Wanda can probably fill in more on this. That they're requiring a fentanyl patch on some people now, and it's a, go ahead.
Judge Gearing, who's the chief judge in this circuit, requires anybody under her supervision, if you will, who's out on bond, to have a drug patch. Currently, those cost fifty dollars. Because they're going to add fentanyl to the cocaine, marijuana, THC, methamphetamine, barbiturate. It's going to increase the price of the testing by twenty dollars, so they're moving it up to seventy dollars per patch. And a patch is only good for two weeks, and that, and then the patch comes off and they test it, but that is a condition of being out on bond.
And and currently, the, the counties get stuck with any bill over fifty dollars is what I read here, so it's nice that the state.
Anybody who wants to be out on bond pays the money. If you don't pay the money, you don't get out on bond. It's pretty simple.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is the ORS Obligation Recovery Fund. They're looking at having counties be involved in that, so that's a good thing. And then, uh, there's a bill introduced by Representative Mortensen that would, when somebody is charged with a crime in a state correctional facility, that I believe it's the Attorney General's Office would prosecute it currently. If something happens at our trustee unit, we have to prosecute that correctly and we have to pay the cost. It doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so those are all positives for the counties, so.
Good. You mentioned three out of how many?
I heard eight hundred.
Yeah, so there are probably a lot that don't help us either, but I'm trying to be positive.
Well, thanks for informing us on that and keeping up with, uh, the legislative session, Dan. Uh, at this time, I would actually move, need a motion to move into executive session?
I would move to go into executive session for poor relief issues and litigation.
I have a motion.
Second.
By Wanda, second by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I don't know how to make that. Anything else, Patty? For him to sign? Oh, Department of Revenue, these are the state checks that we send to the state every month. And then this is, um, oh, you don't need to sign these claims, cause those are within the total claims, but we just let everybody know, cause it's in the package.
So are you, like, taking over the right-time duty?
Well, I'm just learning the ropes, like when Patty's not here and stuff. Um, it's Cassie, K.A.S.I., K.A.S.I., and then F.O.S.S.
Below or above?
Finance.
So, um, just the new. Yep.
So you don't need to sign this one?
Um, I've been in the auditor's office since, um, just a couple years, since twenty twenty-two, I think. So, yeah, I've just worked under Patty. Yeah, maybe a little bit, but she's an awesome person to work for, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right, I'll send you a meetings planner for tomorrow at noon. How does that sound?
Nice to meet you. Wait, actually, I didn't get your name. Oh, okay, gotcha. So you do like the nights, do you, are you just the whole time? Oh, okay. Good, nice, so you have to sit through fun meetings with.
Yeah, okay, you know what, I haven't even, I haven't even talked to you since. So, yeah, I'll, I'll have Ryan let her know.
Yeah, yeah, uh, it was just a weird situation, uh, the story I heard. It's just like where these, uh, people were, they were like, they were offered this free, this stay in a camper. And, uh, and went, and it would turn very hot and then they fell. That's a good definition. So this, this isn't like one of the campground owners, this is somebody who owned a camper in the campground, but the campground owner shit. But the campground owners aren't really kicking it, I would say. Some of them are, some of them, like Aaron's down there, the white guy one, like I know almost everyone in that campground.
I almost snored it last.
She was like, Cassie, I'm like, present? Oh my god, it's like, hey, I'm here, like, what's? But you don't, really?
No.
Especially when you don't have, you don't have to say your first name, you don't have to.
I know, I was so nervous, so, cause I just, you don't have to say last name, and I kept saying last name, and she's like, you don't. All right, well, we'll see you later, yeah, you too.
Better get in there, otherwise they'll get cranky. Oh, crap, that was a remote start. Did I start it? Of course I did.
Hey, did you get all your stuff hanging out?
Actually, I got the interviews I needed for tonight done, alcoholics.
Perfect, perfect. When you work for, in the register station, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. I thought the T-shirt sort of gave it away.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But you have another gig though, don't you?
Yeah, well, I didn't mind, but my main job, I work for Wilson Trailer.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, I, me and a buddy of mine, we did run, uh, electronic recycling business out on the east side of town on Highway fifty. Recycle IT, but we weren't making money at it, so we had to give that up.
Interesting.
And then he died off me, so.
Well, that's a bummer.
Yeah.
Like recent?
No, a few months back.
Oh my gosh.
So.
Sorry about that, it's hard to lose somebody, like a good friend, it sounds very difficult.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough. Mainly because we could tease each other to, like, there was no, you know, like crazy and like, well, sort of like, I went to, made a stop at Larry Nichols Retirement Bracket, you know, for the fire department.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And I was at the grand, Denver State, and I was talking to someone, I was like, hey, you just gotta remember, Larry spent a fire fighter there so long, you remember some Roxworth stuff, so.
Was he offended?
He laughed. Well, you know, my, my buddy was in the Navy. And, uh, I said, yeah, you can actually say it with a date, you know, you know? You know, you have to sort of just sit back and not make public comments and stuff. And I talked to Eric, Eric Christie, a lot out here, what we. Everybody's important. Eric is perfect, he's not perfect.
That's true. Not, not even just pause, never hear it, you have a job, like you gotta like, you know, go to screen, and I understand what you mean, but it's like, most ladies, they're, they're not frontline workers. They, they, they do the building, they deal, I understand, but they're not putting their life out. Right, and what you said, they're not, it's not, they're not, but you're not putting, they don't have screen, they don't have, they don't have their life out.
And maybe if you want to pass that on, maybe, just say, keep that little dividend, like something, keep a lot of money, effort, funding, you know, to pay the, to go make the job.
Life's not fair.
Right, you know, there's all the jurisdictions, where people are out there, they're wrong.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I wonder, I think that's, I think that that's kind of the point too, like, Mr. Christie tried to put across, he's like, you know, we're not trying to exclude anybody. because everybody's important, but we are investing time and money into training for these people, like, the, of the hands, you know, the-
You can just hire somebody and book.
Right.
And, and they're ready to go, like, they're, they're great, you know? So, yeah, if you, if you wanna pass that to them, just, uh, keep that back in the back of the cream, when they're looking at, at, at the majors. You don't have, yeah, you have to stop people like, right, it's like, be paid at, you know, you know, just like, you're sitting at the desk, paperwork, basically, a lot of work, it's not like, you know, at two o'clock in the morning, get an accident site work, set it off, yet, you know, so freezing, you know?
Right, like, when, exactly, like, when I was working at my house, I, I didn't have to worry about being at school. I thought, really important.
Uh, we should come in, you know, the, 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 the snow.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I told him, and he's there, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there, I'm there. I didn't, I was, I didn't, you know, I'm, I'm, I've seen, I've seen, you know, you know, uh, but, but I don't, 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 I don't,
Cassie, we're ready for you.
I can't believe that Dan listed able to actually do some math off his head during the meeting.
I will later, I texted, I texted my friend and said, I need to go to the hospital.
Oh, okay, that was the day?
Oh, just tell her.
Because I, I gave thirty seconds consideration to driving myself.
Already some good feelings over last month and this month, the pay raises. The only thing I can think of, and I can't do some published comments or anything, but the only thing I can think of is, there are certain people that take a lot more resources to get them trained and certified to do the job than others, just something to keep in mind in the back of their head.
I don't know, put that in the packet or what you, something like this, but thank you.
Oh, yeah, I, we, I don't think we do.
I'll, I'll, I'll just scan it and send it to everybody.
I'd move to go back into regular session.
Second.
You got a motion, second to move back into regular session?
All in favor?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan?
All against?
No, no action.
Same sign?
No action will be taken as a result.
Uh, there was no action, no, no, there was.
I would move to approve the county welfare, uh, for CW burial, twenty-three dash four dash zero zero two, in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, and we, we have to approve the burial, you know, it wasn't that in the claims already?
No, that wasn't.
Okay, so do we-
There was one in the claim for Goglin Funeral Home.
But we can't put that in the claims until you guys approve it, so there was one-
But I think that was the one before.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
That was my confusion.
That's why this one's zero zero two.
Got it.
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Was there any action on that litigation?
No act-
No.
No action. And I guess at this point in time, I would ask for items for next meeting.
Who would you, who motioned and seconded?
I moved and-
Dan, second.
Or Ryan, didn't Ryan?
Ryan seconded, uh, the, the burial.
Dan and Ryan?
No, Juan and Ryan.
Wanda and Ryan.
I have that written down, I got it.
Wanda makes the motions to spend money, remember that, that's-
Always.
Always.
Any items for next meeting?
I will not be here for next meeting.
You're gonna be in Mexico?
Yeah.
Do you want us to set, try to set up a Zoom link or something?
Yeah, good.
Is that something we could do?
Can we set up a Zoom meeting or Zoom connection for Don, coming out of Mexico? Uh, you know, I don't know if-
Yeah, I mean, if you-
I'm sure Ryan can.
I did last year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to adjourn this evening's meeting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you all for attending, and look forward to seeing you the first Tuesday of next month, if not soon.
You didn't? That was so funny, when you were like, Cassie, and I said-